Welcome everyone to the City of Daly City Virtual Planning Commission of April 7, 2020. The current Virtual Planning Commission meeting format has been undertaken by the City of Daly City in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The Planning Commission thanks the public for its participation in the virtual meeting format. It is our intention that the commission receive any and all comments that you may wish to make for the land use proposals being considered tonight. If you would like to comment, please do so as soon as possible on the OpenGov website you are now logged into, and the Planning Division staff will read the comments you have submitted after each item. Please make sure that your comment is entered for the correct item on which you desire to offer comment. Also, after each item, there will be a pause for five minutes to ensure that the commission has ample time to receive any comments communicated through the OpenGov website. Thank you. And now, uh, we will, let's see here, I'm gonna go down the line. It says, uh, we will have a roll call, Tatum?
Uh, yes, uh, Crump?
Present.
Present.
Pacheco?
Present.
Present.
Satori?
Present.
Vilma Nueva?
Present.
Present.
Roano?
Roano?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I am gonna throw in the Pledge of the Flag, so I know that was one. May I have Ray start it?
Okay, uh, uh, the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
Public Republic.
For which it stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for indulging me in that. And now, uh, we're gonna pass because the minutes, there will be no minutes today, tonight. And so we have a public hearing. So the public hearing is Item 1, Carmelisa Morales Use Permit UPR 91914209 Design Review DR 91914210. A request by Regency Centers to construct an approximately 5,000 square foot restaurant with a drive-through at the northeast quadrant of Ceremony Shopping Center. The building would include an interior children's playground, I'm sorry, play area, outdoor patio area, and a 20-car, double-lane drive-through that would wrap around the east and north sides of the building. The planned development, PD 69 zoning district permits, a drive-through restaurant with a use permit. The project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, per CEQA guidelines, Section 15332, infill development.
Hello, everyone. Um, I am having some technical difficulties. I have the spinning wheel of death, um, as I'm trying to share the screen. Um, so if you could just give me one minute. I'm not sure if there's a way for me to exit this and restart it.
A lot of bandwidth to begin with, video and audio video.
Yeah, I think so. This is the first time I've seen this before. So it is taking a while. I'm wondering if I should restart my application. Maybe I can send it with. Okay.
Okay.
I'll be right back.
I'll be right back.
Tatum, is there any way to tell if there's any public viewing in the OpenGov?
Oh, I can't, I can't doing, but there are no, on there, yet. Yay!
Yay!
Okay.
Awesome!
Am I back on?
Yay! Thank you, everybody, for your patience.
All right, we're on there. All right, we're on there.
All right, thank you. Okay. See. All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
We can.
Okay, great.
Beautiful.
So this, uh, so good evening, first of all. For the restaurant with a drive-through, Building 600 at three Ceremony Center. Um, it's for a use permit and a design review permit. Just some background information on this project. It's sort of like maybe the third or fourth flight phase of the ceremony expansion. Um, in June 2015, the, this property was rezoned to PD 69, which included additional retail space and restaurant space, among other things. Recently, there was a project approved in August for the expansion of the Northwest Quadrant, which included some retail space and restaurant space. Um, and currently, there is about 44,000 square feet of undeveloped retail programming at Rame. So this is the site location. Like I said, at the northeast quadrant of Ceremony Shopping Center. It's right next to I-280 South Gate Avenue and the driveway leading to South Gate Avenue on the property. Yeah, and here are a couple photos of the project site. I'm sure you're familiar with the digital, you've ever been to the, uh, the shopping center. Here's another view facing, um, northwest. Uh, to go over the project briefly, um, it's approximately 5,000 square foot restaurant with a drive-through. It includes a children's play area and an outdoor patio area. Um, and wrapping around two, three sides of the building is a 20-car, double-lane drive-through. The proposed hours of operation is Monday through Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. The employee shifts will be between peak hours and off-peak hours. During peak hours, it will double to 15 instead of seven. Um, and the next item on the agenda today is the second drive-through restaurant, also proposed within Lot 10B, which is a new 177 space parking lot in this quadrant. So here's a site plan of the quadrant. You see Building 600, which is the one in this presentation right now, at the bottom, and Building 750 right above it. And here is a landscape plan showing the proposed landscaping. So there are some tree improvements along the perimeter, as well as some bio-tre- retention areas for stormwater treatment. Here's a floor plan of the property. It's a one-story building or of the, of the, uh, project. And here are some elevations. I'd like the commissioners to be aware that there was an error in the revised plant sets that were delivered on Friday. Um, the aluminum awning is actually a legendary gray color, and then the storefront system will be a dark brown, bronze matte color, but it's reflected in the elevations correctly.
Okay.
And, uh, here are two other elevations. And the next few slides will be some perspective drawings provided by the applicant. And when you see the, uh, the two, the two-lane drive-through wrapping around the side of the building. And here is a nice perspective drawing. You see I-280 behind the building and then the other proposed drive-through restaurant to the left. I mean, you can also see the proposed parking lot area. Um, in terms of the design review permit, um, as you can, as you have seen, it is a contemporary architectural design. There's various articulation that has been improved since the first application, as well as varying materials and colors, and some awning features. The signage is in alignment with what the future tenant will propose. Obviously, the, the name and the logo will change, but it's in the same location and generally the same, uh, design concept. Uh, but generally, the staff is satisfied with the design. Uh, this project does require a use permit, uh, because in the PD 69 zoning district, a restaurant with a drive-through requires a use permit to be permitted. There were certain things that staff was concerned about, specifically regarding pedestrian safety and queuing and circulation throughout the property. So the applicant has addressed that with, um, various pedestrian links and enhanced pedestrian crossings, which I'll show in the next pedestrian plan, um, as well as some conditions of approval to install an elevated mid-block crossing at South Gate Avenue along the driveway portion, and that was, um, and that was, uh, approved with engineering. This is the pedestrian plan. Uh, you can see how the landscape is, uh, moving around the pedestrian connections. So the pedestrian links link the two buildings together, as well as enhanced pedestrian crossings at, um, the south side of the, of the site and a connection from South Gate Avenue. Uh, there was a queuing and circulation analysis prepared for this project. Overall, it concluded that the peak hour vehicle overflow can be accommodated with minimal impact, um, and there should be no impact to site access. They did recommend that there be a floating menu or ordering staff during the peak lunch hour. And as you can see in the proposed drive-through, um, system that has been incorporated. As I said, it is a 20-car, double-lane drive-through with a bypass lane for customers with smaller orders. So basically, the way to work is the smaller orders, they would be able to get that when they order and bypass the pickup window, in case the person in front of them has a larger order. There's also a iPad ordering system that staff would be holding in their hand during peak hours, um, or whenever necessary, to avoid, um, a backflow in the queue. Um, and overall, uh, staff and engineer, including the Engineering Division are, I think this is a satisfactory design. Uh, there were some revisions to the conditions of approval by the Engineering Division, just in terms of the language. We discovered that the requested sidewalk along the south side of the lot or of the, of the project site would not be feasible based on the site design. So they've changed the language to hardscape area instead of a pedestrian connection. Um, and just added additional language to make sure that the Engineering Division does review it before it gets approved. Um, and just additional language on the elevated mid-block crossing, adding language about, um, the consideration of emergency vehicle access and also, um, adding the design aspect, um, under the approval of both engineering and planning. And that's 50 and 51 in the conditions of approval. Um, as for the environmental assessment, um, we, staff has determined that it's categorically exempt, presented to Class 32, Section 15332 of Infill Development Project. So basically, um, it's on a smaller site and it meets certain requirements under CEQA that allow us to categorize it into an exemption. And these are the findings that are listed in the staff report, generally that it's consistent with the general plan and the zoning standards, design review and our stormwater plan, et cetera. In conclusion, our staff recommends that the Planning Commission forward the following recommendations to the City Council, which is to adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report, affirm the environmental assessment, and approve the use permit and design review permit subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report. I am available if you have any additional questions, but that concludes my presentation.
Um, I, may I start? I do have a question. It's interesting that it indicated that the hours or the days of operation is Monday through Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. So it, does that mean it's not going to be open on Sunday?
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay, so, so you have a restaurant that's not gonna be open on Sunday? Is that a, their reason? I mean, I'm just curious, because we don't know what restaurant this is. So it's hard to kind of get a night, and also indication that it's peak hours from 11:30 to 1:30. And so that, I thought that was interesting. I mean, they're saying that it's really lunchtime and not a breakfast type of thing or an evening type of location, although it is open until 11:00. I'm just curious.
So, um, from my understanding, the, there is a future tenant already in, in talks with the owner. Um, so I think they already know who the owner is and that those are their proposed hours of operation. So some restaurants, I think it really depends on the, the restaurant itself, on whether they want to be open on specific days or not. Um, so I guess for this one, it's just Monday through Saturday. And based on the peak hour, it sounds like it's more of a lunch and dinner type of, um, restaurant versus something that's like a diner where it'd be more of a peak hour during breakfast. I think that's why it was indicated as lunch hour.
Okay, thank you.
Teresa.
Go ahead, Rick.
If you looked at the small print in the, um, in the, um, plans we got this last week, the, one of the listed, uh, people involved is a Chick-fil-A architect, and I believe that's why it's closed on Sunday.
That would.
Oh!
I think that was my thought, too. That it might be a Chick-fil-A.
I didn't catch that. I'm hoping it's, I like Chick-fil-A, but, um, okay. Okay, so it's not open on Sundays. That's so strange. Okay. Okay. Um, does anyone else have a question?
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
As far as this project is concerned, I am, I would say, very satisfied and, and I, I think the design is okay. It is, in fact, uh, the, the plan is very timely, because, uh, if you don't observe patiently now that we have the so-called, uh, stay at, stay in the place or, or lockdown. Now we can just order and buy this in the counter. You don't have to go down, and it's even safer, and it's even sanitary, I would say, because you, you're just staying in your car. And I, I, I'm reading here one of the comments of, uh, one, uh, I think it's this summer, Sami. It's, uh, I think it's a concern is about, uh, we have a lot of fast food here in surrounding area. But to me, uh, it is up to us what are we going to buy or what we're going to eat. Our choice. But to me, uh, this one's very timely. The project is very timely, especially in within the ceremony area. And I fully agree with the, the staff that, uh, that is a very timely, uh, location. At the same time, uh, people are now becoming conscious of health, conscious of their surroundings, conscious of the, uh, area wherein we mingle with people, then having a huge restaurant or a huge, uh, food, with the fast food wherein we can, we, we are constantly, uh, mingle with a lot of people. But here, I would say, uh, this drive-through is better than, it, it's becoming timely now. That's why I would say this project is very laudable, especially very timely at the same time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's my observation.
Thank you so much for the comment. May I ask, Rick, if you have any comments, Rick?
I do not.
I do not.
Okay. Gary, do you have any comments?
No, I do not, no. I do not.
Well, I, all I was gonna say was, I agree with the, when looking at the development, it was nice to see that there was an effort put in for the landscaping, for it to, you know, the way, uh, it has the double lanes. I thought that was appropriate as well. And I also liked, oh, and I'm sorry, Vilma, I'm sorry. I didn't catch her. I should, Vella, I should ask you too. I'm sorry. Do you have any thoughts or comments?
No comments.
No comments. Okay. So no, I was just saying was, I like the idea of having it's kind of what In-N-Out does, which is if it gets kind of backed up, they'll get out and they will take orders so that it moves along. So that, that sounds like a great idea as well. It's, it's a part of Ceremony Shopping Center that doesn't have a lot going besides Macy's. And, um, the only thing I would say is it takes, it does have parking. It takes up. How many parking spaces do we lose, um, when this is, this part is built?
Um, so we are, so technically, in lot losing, uh, so there's a certain amount of parking that's required. Since it's surrounded by parking spaces, it would be a total of 177. In addition to, actually, I don't know the exact number, but it still meets the zoning code requirements or what's required by the PD 69 standards. Um, I believe that there are, and there is still an excess amount of parking. So they are exceeding the amount required, even with the building.
Very good. Okay. So it, um, now at this point, I'm guessing, we'll let, let just look. We, we would like to have Tatum read. We have two public comments as of beginning of the meeting. Is that correct, Tatum?
Oh, no, we don't have any.
Okay, so there's no public, uh, questions or?
I'm scrolling through just to confirm, but no.
Okay, do we want to wait five minutes? I mean, no, we were just chatting back and forth. Should we wait, starting right now? Or how do we want to do that, in case anyone has any questions?
Um, through the chair, if I may. Um, I, I would think two minutes, two to three minutes would probably be sufficient.
Okay, Kelly, I think, I think that's a good idea, and I'm gonna put a timer. Thank you. I'm gonna put a timer on, and then that way we were all on board. I'm gonna put it at three minutes, and I'm gonna start it right now. Okay, everybody.
I was gonna say, while we're waiting, I wonder if it's a feasible thing for people to mute their device or laptop while they're not speaking. That may reduce the echo. So just remember to unmute when you want to talk.
Um, I don't, we did, we did get one comment come in. So I don't know if you'd like me to read it now or when we wait.
Please do. Okay, no, it's time. My, my timer just went off.
Okay. Okay, we received a comment from, uh, someone named Darren Lee, and I'll read it verbatim. It says, "Thank you to the city staff for the presentation. Before the Planning Commission decides to act to approve the permit, they should set conditions for the stores. It should be allowed to ensure that they reflect community values and treating workers fair, especially in these trying times. It's ever more important that who we allow open a restaurant in Daly City reflects our humanity." And that concludes the comment.
And I, and I just wanted to reiterate what I kind of heard, because there was some noise. He was requesting that we make sure that whoever brings in- He was requesting that we make sure that whoever brings in a restaurant or starts at the restaurant treats the employees fairly. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, that's a good summary.
Okay. I think that all, I think that all, I think that all employers should do that. I mean, you know, regardless. But I thought that's a good point. Okay. Any thoughts from my fellow commissioners? On the comment?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Well, with regards to the comment of the one holder, you know, in the city, we always work for the public interest, general welfare and public health of the people. So in case there is some problem, in case only if it comes, then we will support whatever is right for the community and right for the neighborhood. That is how we work in the city. So, so that's it, Madam Chairman. And I have some concern here regarding the proposed restaurant with the glue. Drink car double lane, drive-through access from the southern corner of the side. The drive-through design includes a bypass lane which would allow customers with smaller orders to reserve their food and exit the line flyer, reaching the pickup window if the vehicle at the pickup window has a largest order that takes additional time to complete. My point here, Madam Chairman, is if they have some own order or order by phone, it can facilitate the food takeout if they're just going to pick it up. Then lining up for so long, queuing up for so long, just like what's happening, what's happening in In-N-Out. So probably they should consider also own order and paying it by credit card, by phone. So this will be easier. So there will be no problem as far as lining up or queuing up for the food they order. That is my, my, my comment here and my observation, Madam Chairman. They should always, especially the so-called drive-through, they should adopt a system wherein they can accept own order. Just pick it up, just pick it up. No one lining.
Right. I have a quick question. There's these food, do you mean like the, like, like there's these food apps you kind of lot of businesses use and you go in and you can order from any restaurant and then someone runs and picks it up and delivers it to you? Is that kind of what you mean?
I don't know. They can order also by phone, by delivery, or you can pick it up. Up to you. It's, it's whatever system you devise for the convenience of the customers. Then lining up, you know, if you're very observant, like this Popeye or this this, it's a long line in the, because probably the system is not so good and also the so-called In-N-Out. If they have the so-called drive-through that they can call up, especially a large order, the system will be very systematic. Then getting it there, you're lining up, you know, it takes. Although some people are doing anything, that's why they're lining up. But for me, it would be convenient and it would be, I would say cleaner for everybody that they just pick it up. For a lot of places, they order it and pay it by phone. To me, it's a matter of system. It's not really how we're doing, but it's a matter of putting up a good system. So everybody will be very comfortable, very systematic on this. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you for the comment. Velba or Gary or Rick, anyone?
Teresa?
Yes.
Is Commissioner Satori talking about like apps? You know, like Starbucks, Chipotle have apps where you can just place your order in?
And then just pick it up so it's already ready.
Pick it up at the restaurant. Or you can probably do, or do an online order?
My point is both, both could be by phone or lining up or so, because if you have order by phone, it will be easier for all of us. And those who are not doing anything, they can line up.
Correct.
If I might say though, if it is a Chick-fil-A, they are very, very smart about this, Ray, and I would imagine they would use every possible way to get people to come and pick up. And electronic ordering is a really big deal. I've noticed up at Geller Marketplace in the restaurants there.
So, Velba, you have any thoughts?
No, I mean, I, I understand what Commissioner Satori was saying. I think just given, you know, the current situation, I wouldn't be surprised that restaurants are going to be moving towards that. So doing mobile app, ordering, ordering online. And so I'm sure they'll consider it once they open.
No, I agree. Might we do a, just a soft recommendation that they, you know, consider and because we all see that it's every, all these businesses are moving towards that, so we assume. But maybe just if we would like to just recommend that they do their part in, in having online or orders or such, just recommending it. Kind of like a soft recommendation, I would say. Would that be okay, Michael, Tatum?
Yeah, that's fine. The applicant is also here, can comment on or soft recommendation.
Okay. And you're saying they're, they're actually joined in?
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are.
Very good. Would you mind? That would be nice. Would they like to speak?
Yeah, if they can speak, let's hear them.
Good, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This is Allison Warner for Regency Centers. We own Ceremony Center. Thank you. Thank you all for allowing this to happen remotely. I'm going to apologize for my cat in the background. That's the noise that you're hearing. She's very needy for attention, even though I'm here all day, every day these days. I, you know, since we do have three motions, there, you know, obviously the two drive-throughs are going to be very similar and then the tentative parcel map. I did prepare just kind of a quick statement overall of what we're looking to do, but I think what I'll, what I'll start with is, you know, the conversation at hand around how restaurants and retailers are shifting their operations, given how the market is evolving and giving all the different ways that consumers and customers can shop for all different types of products. You know, we, we used to think that grocery was immune to internet and look, here we are today. Everyone is very thankful for the ability to use an app or order online and get delivery or pick up. So what I will say is that every business, including restaurants, are moving in this direction. And as the property owner, all tenants that we are talking to for this building and all other spaces, we look for tenants that are doing these types of things because that tells us that they're going to be very successful and viable tenants. The more touch points they can provide a customer to transact, the more successful they're going to be. I will just add to that, that what we're seeing right now with everything being closed is the importance of brick and mortar as well. And so it's really kind of a full circle that these businesses need, both the brick and mortar location and the online capabilities, you know, call and order ahead capabilities to be as successful as they can possibly be. So we like to say that we work with the best partners and the best partners look at their business the same way that, you know, we see our customers looking at the business. So I think everyone can have faith that these tenants will certainly meet the types of kind of needs that you guys are talking about. I'll just leave it at that for now, since I know we have two other motions and I can bring up my other comments later if they feel necessary. But happy to answer any other questions you guys might have.
Thank you, Allison. I appreciate that. I know Commissioner Ray and the rest of us, we do appreciate that. And I think that's where we're moving. We're all moving towards that and we look forward to seeing what's ahead. So now, since we, do we have any, we have no more questions. May I move forward? So at this point, we, I'd like to have a motion, please, to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
I need someone to make the first one first. Gary?
My bad.
Who'd like the second? Okay, I've got Velba. Okay. And now that the motion, and so we, we have a first and a second and a motion carried, I guess. So our second is to adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report. Oh, a vote.
You need a voice vote.
Yes, may we have a voice vote?
All votes in paper.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Very good. Okay, so it moves. Motion is carried. And now, thank you. And now we're moving, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report of February 4th.
So moved.
As outlined. Thank you.
Second the motion.
Thank you, Ray. And may we have a vote, please?
All those in favor?
All in favor. Thank you.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, so the motion is carried. And the last is, I'd like to have a motion. So we affirmed the environmental assessment.
So moved.
I second.
Second. Very good, Velba. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? No? Okay, so that motion is carried. Thank you for your patience, lady and gentleman. Ladies and gentlemen. Okay, very good. So we have voted to recommend the approval of use permit UPR 91914209, Design Review DR 91914210. Subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report of April 7th. The motion is carried and we had a unanimous roll call vote. So we move forward. Okay, everyone. So now we're going to item two. And item two, Carmelisa, pardon me?
We approved the environmental. We never made a motion on the use.
Oh, 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 oh. Okay, let's do that.
We need a roll call for the approval of the item. Thank you.
Okay, let's do the roll call.
Yes. We could have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We got a second for Gary and a first by Rick. Thank you so much, gentlemen. I'm sorry. Kelly or Tatum?
I'll do the roll call vote. Crumb?
Aye.
Deco?
Aye.
Satori?
Yes.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Roanu?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for keeping me in order, señor. Okay, let's move forward. Item two. Carmelisa Morales, Use Permit UPR 91914212 and Design Review DR 91914213. "A request by Regency Centers to construct an approximate 2,500 square foot restaurant with a drive-through at the northeast quadrant of Ceremony Shopping Center. The building would include an outdoor patio area and a 10-car drive-through that would wrap around the northwest and south sides of the building. The planned development PD 69 zoning district permits a drive-through restaurant with a use permit. The product, I'm sorry, the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act CEQA and per CEQA guidelines, section 15332 in fill development." Tatum? Nope. I'm saying that I should, I'm sorry, Carmelisa, you go. Sorry. You'd like to do this?
Yes. Okay, so this is for the second drive-through. You sort of had a sneak peek in the last presentation. I'll go over it quickly. If there's anything you want me to repeat again from the, that's repeated again in this presentation, feel free to ask at the end of the presentation.
Oh. Sorry.
Okay. So this proposed building is north of the other drive-through restaurant. It's closest to Southgate Avenue, as you can see in the site location map. And this is just a refresher again on the background of the project. It's a part of the overall Ceremony Shopping Center expansion. There have been previous projects approved with the most recent one in August 2019. And just to repeat, there is still 44,000 square feet of undeveloped retail remaining. And the next few slides is just showing what the project site looks like right now. It will be at the end of this sidewalk where the trees are. That's where the proposed building will be. And this is showing where, I believe, a little to the left is where the proposed building will be and you can see the existing Macy's building on the right. The project is a 500 square foot coffee shop restaurant. It includes an outdoor patio and drive-through. For this specific restaurant, there are multiple order, pay and pickup orders, both with a, with a mobile application and also either through the, by the restaurant or through the drive-through. The proposed hours of operation is every day from 4:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., which makes sense for the coffee shop use, so it opens way earlier. As for the number of employees working, there are, there would be six during the peak hours and about four to six on the off-peak hours. And as I've mentioned before, this is the second drive-through restaurant in Lot B, Lot 10B, which is a new parking lot at the northeast quadrant. This is the site plan. It's the same one as in the previous presentation, but you see Building 750 at the corner next to Southgate Avenue. Here again is the landscape plan. You see the proposed building 750 again. Here is a floor plan, so it's about half the size of the other drive-through restaurant. The drive-through also wraps around all three sides, the three out of the four sides of the building. And here are some elevations of the proposed coffee shop restaurant. And the next few slides is some perspective views. And this is a rendering showing, I believe it's westward towards the existing Macy's building, the existing parking garage. And as I mentioned, in August, there was a project approved in the northwest quadrant, so you can see the future retail building and hotel that would be going on that side. And here's another, this was in the previous presentation, showing both buildings and the lot. So similar to the last drive-through restaurant, it does have a modern architectural design. It uses, incorporates various materials and colors. The signage will also be in alignment with the design of the future tenant and staff is satisfied with the design. This is, it's the same thing with the previous drive-through restaurant. There were concerns regarding pedestrian safety and queuing and circulation. And in the next slide, it shows the proposed pedestrian safety enhancements, which include pedestrian enhanced crossings and pedestrian links to, from Southgate Avenue and throughout the lot. And just to go over the analysis, so this is a separate analysis from the other drive-through restaurant. It had overall the same conclusions that the peak overflow could be accommodated with some minimal impact and no impact to site access. They did also recommend a floating menu and or ordering staff during the peak periods. And after review by the Engineering Division and Planning Division, they determined the ordering system and drive-through design to be satisfactory. Just to go over the proposed drive-through system, it's different from the other drive-through restaurant in that drive-through restaurant in that, um, there is going to be a pre-menu board, um, which allows for the customer to preview the menu of the, that's off here, offered before they get to the order window or the order board. I believe it's voice automated. And the, the placement of the boards is strategic so that by the time they are done ordering or they're done looking at the menu, um, their, their, um, their order will be ready at the pickup window. And, um, as I've mentioned before, it will be staffed, um, there would be additional staff during the peak hours, just from 5:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Um, just the same exact revisions as the previous, uh, presentation in conditions of approval 50 and 51. They're revising some of the language to, so from pedestrian connection to hardscape area, and then just clarifying that engineering must review, and that the proposed mine has to be to their satisfaction and to planning, the planning division's satisfaction. The same environmental assessment, this is category exempt. Um, it is considered an infill development project as part of CEQA. Um, and very similar findings that are listed in the staff report. And lastly, for the recommendations, um, it, staff recommends that the planning commission forward the following recommendation to the city council, which is to adopt the findings outlined, as outlined in the staff report, affirm the environmental assessment, and approve the use permit and design review subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report. Um, I'm available if you have any questions. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a quick question, um, just to get an idea. The, um, the Denny's that was there in Ceremony for many years, is this building about the same size as the Denny's?
Um, I don't remember off the top of my head what the size of the Denny's was. Um, I think it's smaller. It might be the, around the same size as the, as building 600 in the previous presentation, but perhaps Allison or the applicant can confirm that.
Okay, we can ask them. I'm just curious on how many people do they expect to seat? We have an idea.
Yeah, I do have the capacity. Um, and this, for this one or the other project? It's for this, uh, coffee shop restaurant, Teresa?
Yes, for the coffee shop.
See? Um, so actually, that wasn't included in the operation statement. Perhaps the applicant speak to that.
Okay. Um, before we move to the applicant, uh, do any of the other commissioners have any questions?
No.
No.
Uh, Velba?
No.
Okay, very good. So if we'd like to move, would, would we agree then we'll let the applicant speak if, like to give us a little information on this coffee shop? And I guess my other question would be, is this going to be a name brand coffee shop or is it going to be like a mom and pop coffee shop? Just curious.
The staff does not know the, um, the proposed tenant. Um, I'm not sure if that information is public at this time, but if the applicant will.
Teresa? I think you might find it public if you look at that same document that we got last. It lists an architect from Starbucks.
I, okay. You're good at finding these. Okay, thank you, Rick. I appreciate that. Um, would, would the applicant like to speak with regards to how many people we feel take the seating?
Hi, good evening. Chairman Commissioners, it's Allison Warner from Regency again. To answer your first question, the old Denny's was slightly larger than the proposed building 600. The coffee shop building is about half the size of what Denny's used to be. And, you know, I can't, I can't speak to the capacity unfortunately, but what I would say it is on par with other coffee shops that are in Ceremony Center. Both of them would be very similar. Um, we, you know, don't have a signed agreement yet. Um, we are talking to a handful, um, and it's looking like it'll most likely be one versus others, but again, um, we're not quite there and ready to disclose that yet.
Okay, um, that's fair. That's fair. Um, so I, I guess at this point, if we'd like to move, if someone would like to, um, if I could have a motion to close the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Very good. Second?
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, so now that we've closed the public hearing, um, before we move on that, Tatum, do you have any comments, public comments?
No, no comment.
No need to comment. Should we wait three minutes then at this point, everyone?
Well, we closed it, Teresa.
I think you just closed the public hearing, so I think we're okay. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
We didn't have any comments. We're okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Sorry. And now that I did that, sorry. Let us, let me see if I, does anyone have a motion to adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report of April 7th?
So moved.
Second.
Very good, Rick. Thank you, Gary. Uh, so we'd like to vote on that. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Very good, so moved. Um, and now, um, would like to have a motion to affirm the environmental assessment?
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And no one opposed? And so now, um, I'll look to a roll call to approve use of permit UPR 91914212 and Design Review DR 91914213, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report of April 7, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Now we'd like to have a roll call.
Okay. Uh, Crump?
Aye.
Pacheco?
Aye.
The Tori?
Yes.
Yes.
Villanueva?
Aye.
Roano?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much, everybody. So let's move to the third item. Carmelisa Morales, uh, will be presenting. It's a minor subdivision, sub 91914211. A request by Regency Centers to subdivide one parcel into four parcels to allow the property owner to lease three of the four lots to tenants. The project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, and per CEQA guidelines, section 15315, minor land divisions. Carmelisa?
Thank you. So for the final, for today, or for tonight, um, it is a minor subdivision at the same property at the Ceremony Center for a four-lot subdivision. Uh, so this shows the site location. It's the entire Ceremony Shopping Center property, founded by Ceremony California I-280. Uh, so for this project, um, the applicant proposes to subdivide the main lot occupied by the shopping center into four lots. Uh, one is a 110,000-square-foot lot at the northwest quadrant and a 45,000-square-foot lot at the northeast quadrant, and then a 62,000-square-foot lot at the northeast quadrant. And lastly, the remaining lot would be a 67.4-acre lot, which would be the remainder of the, um, the property, and that would, um, be where the shopping center is located. Um, so the reason for this subdivision is to allow the Regency to lease the three smaller lots to future tenants. Um, in the northwest quadrant, it would be for the future hotel, um, and the, and the two northeast lots would be for the proposed drive-through restaurants. Um, after review of the proposal, um, it was determined that the lots are adjacent to the infrastructure that can adequately serve the lots. So this shows the proposed parcel map, and I've highlighted, I've pointed out where the proposed lots are. So Lot 1 is at the top, the right corner, right top corner. Um, and Lot 2 and 3 in the northeast quadrant, right next to it. And then Lot 4 is the remainder of the property. Um, there were some engineering division requirements imposed on the project, which would be to, uh, provide all required public utility easements and to relocate any public utility easements, utilities as necessary, um, to dedicate a public access easement for the sidewalks, et cetera. Um, they must meet city standards, um, and to dedicate reciprocal access or ingress and ingress easements, so that newly created parcels not connecting to a public street will be allowed access to a public street, and that's specific to Lot 3, which is where Building 600 will be going. Um, so after review, we have, staff has determined that the proposal complies with the subdivision map act, specifically that it, uh, meets, or it complies with the general plan land use designation, um, for the proposed development. Um, the site is physically suitable for the type and density of the proposed subdivision. The design won't be, um, environmentally, environmentally damaging or, um, cause serious public health problems, um, in that the subdivision does not conflict, conflict with any public easements. Um, similar, or the same as the last two, uh, projects, there have been revisions to engineering's conditions of approval. Um, so this should be actually condition of approval 20 and 21, not 50 and 51. Um, so they are changing pedestrian connection with hardscape area. And they are clarifying that all of the designs have to be approved by the engineering division. Um, and in condition of approval 21, they are still requiring the elevated midwest crossing, um, which is to, to ensure that it's in line with the other two proposed developments on the lot or in the northeast quadrant, um, and just clarifying that, um, emergency vehicle access has to be considered. As for the environmental assessment, um, staff has determined that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to Class 15, Section 15215, which is minor land divisions. It is in a, the property is in an urbanized area, um, and they are proposing to, uh, subdivide into four or fewer parcels, which meets the requirements for this exemption. And here are the findings that have been summarized but are outlined in full in the staff report, um, which include, uh, that it's categorically exempt pursuant to CEQA. It'll be in compliance with our stormwater, um, permit. Um, it complies with the subdivision map back, and that it will meet all building code requirements. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission forward the following recommendations to the city council, um, to adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report, to affirm the environmental assessment, and to approve the minor subdivision, subject to the conditions of approval outlined in the staff report. I am available if you have any other questions. Thank you.
I'm okay. Yes, sir.
I would like to know where the northeast quadrant, where the hotel will be. Can you sign it to me here?
I can flip to that on this, on these slides.
How, um, second question is, how many, how many rooms do you think it can accommodate in that area? Is it, is it, so Lot 3 or Lot 2?
Uh, it would be in Lot 1.
It would be in Lot 1.
Oh, the, okay. So that's facing column. I thought it was facing 280. Okay. So how many rooms do you think can, uh, be built in that place?
Um. I don't remember the exact number, but I believe it's approximately 120. The applicant can confirm that as well.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, but this, this project has been approved and is, um, in, under construction.
Okay. And do you know about the hotel? Which, uh, which, what's on their certificate, Holiday Inn or Mario?
I do not know the, uh, the brand of the hotel.
That's it. I'm just asking. I'm just curious because, uh, that would be a good location. Okay, thank you.
Do you have any other comments? Or questions?
No.
No.
Okay. So at this point, before we, before I vote to close the public hearing, let's give it three minutes. Would that be okay, everyone? I'll start that now. Very good. I'll start it now.
You're the chairman, so you can do.
And, uh, Tatum, do we have anything this, uh, to, do we have any?
Uh, no, we received no other comment.
No more comments. Okay, very good. Okay, so let us move forward. Thank you very much for checking. So at this time, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Anybody opposed? Okay, so let's move forward. Uh, may I have a motion to adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report of April 7, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Very good. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Anybody opposed? Okay. Okay, thank you. So now we'll move, uh, let's see, we would like, if I have a motion to affirm the environmental assessment?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And no one opposed? Very good. So now, uh, if we could have, um, a motion and then we'd have a vote to approve minor subdivision, sub 91914211, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report of April 7, 2020?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. And may we have a roll call, please?
Uh, yes. Uh, Crump?
Aye.
Aye.
Pateko?
Aye.
Aye.
The Tori?
Yes.
Yes.
Villanueva?
Villanueva. Aye.
Roano? Roano.
Aye. Very good. Thank you very much. And so now, um, before we, uh, adjourn, and I know we need to have that first and second, I'd like to take a moment to, if you might indulge me in a journey today on behalf of all the healthcare workers and all those who've been affected by the COVID-19 virus, as well as all the people that are, are out there volunteering, working, and just to know that, you know, we're all in this together, and, um, I'd like to do that, if that's okay with the rest of everybody?
Sure.
Perfectly fine. Perfectly fine.
Thank you. And then, uh, at this time then, uh, we need a motion to, uh, adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
I guess.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. May I, before I sign off, I'd like to thank all the staff of the city, Daly City, that assisted us in, uh, doing this meeting, and I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners for, um, just for doing such a great job. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Have a good night.
Thank you.
The Tori. Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Commissioner Villanueva, good night.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Everybody.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so we, we adjourn.
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 Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.